Between the flag and the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to every liberty for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda, I see one item added that the USDA broadband grant and one thing deleted, which is mental health RFP discussion that's still being reviewed by our attorneys.
Will you make sure your mics are on?
Hello?
Testing, testing.
Definitely. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
You can hear me well.
Well, we have an analog timed item, consent to annexation of county property request, town of Lakeview.
No, Darwin's up there, so.
Great you joined me, I'm glad Ray's here, town manager for the town of Lakeview. In your packet of information I gave you, I gave you that whole outline piece in the end, which is the account eighteen six five five, which is county ownership this time. Just outside, according to what the town has, outside of the town boundary for town limits, and so they're requesting that we have, and you'll see Ray's letter in the packet also, which was sent to you April twenty seventh, or dated April twenty seventh, that we're there, as you know, there's a solar project, Orgis Energy has been approved for a ten to twelve megawatt project just north of this property, which is outside of the boundary, but they have also prepared documents and bring us to be annexed as well. And so this strip is right in between current and what is proposed, so just, this is being connected dots, let's speak, or town boundary, and not leave a little gap in there. Pretty simple. In my report also, on your summary report, my recommendation is also to direct staff, which is me, to initiate the process to donate that piece of property to the town. Similar to what we've done with Christmas Valley, we stuck close to the airport, which made a lot of sense for the Darkin Rock District to acquire, it makes sense for us to get this to the town. That, that piece of property is a narrow strip of land, which we've talked about before, that in the most narrow point is probably only about four feet wide, in some of the other areas, it's closer to forty, and most of it's probably about, you know, twelve to fifteen in there. So it resembles what could be a path, you know, for that subdivision if it ever is developed. We, as you know, just entered into agreement with Orgis as well, on that narrow strip of land for that genti line that will go across there. So, you know, Ray and I have talked and all that, Ray's kind of shared the blanks.
Most of this whole parcel of land, it's tax allotted one hundred, whatever the account number is, I can't remember, is already, all of the east piece that runs north and south is already actually within the town of Lakeview, it was annexed, I remember years ago, apparently. The, the strip across the north between what was Millennium, you may remember the Millennium group that came to town, between Millennium and what used to be the, and I now refer to it for Lucky Lass industrial site, and then a little strip along the west edge along Rabbit Hill Road, is outside of the boundary of the town of Lakeview still. And as Darwin said, Orgis has consented to, but is not quite ready for us to move forward with the annexation of the Talings property. When they're ready, then we will move forward with that. And their property is contiguous with the town already, further to the east along the Eagle River side. So, so we're going to annex that property, or at least start the procedure to annex that property, but in looking at this parcel of land along the north edge of Millennium and the south edge of the Talings property, it would seem to be logical to clear up the jurisdiction on that at this point, instead of having a four foot to thirty foot, or whatever the length or width is at the west, east, I guess at the east end, it would make sense that that not be a separate jurisdiction in the middle of kind of everything else out there, so. If you're, if you're willing to consider a consent to annexation of the property, I'll have our attorney prepare that as we did before, you know, with the legal description, and have that presented to you for either your next commission meeting or a future meeting. But I don't want to start that process and spend their time if you're not interested in their set.
Just a couple of questions. Roberta's already in your jurisdiction as far as the.
Roberta to Missouri is, yes.
And then this would take in, and I don't, I haven't read that, are you wanting to take in the road that will follow this annexation also? Because it would be.
Are you talking about Rabbit Hill Road?
Well, it would, I guess, I don't know if that's what, from then to Missouri around, it takes in a parcel there. The reason why I ask that, because this pie-shaped piece is right next to the road there.
Well, okay, I see why you're talking about, you're talking about the sliver along Rabbit Hill Road that runs north and south from where the ninety degree turn is out to the, I had not, were willing to consider that, I had not proposed it, I thought that that maybe made sense to leave with you guys, or whoever has the county road, just, you know, the county road doesn't appear to be straight up and down on the, on laying north and south there, just from observation.
The reason why, generally.
We don't want the road, I guess, is that, we don't want Rabbit Hill Road.
Well, generally, if there is a chunk of property like this one, sort of pie-shaped, next to the road, you would think that you'd retain that in case there's ever need to expand the road there, or those type things, don't know the exact. With this, I looked at it on the map, it's just something Darwin, for you guys to check with the road official and look at. Another thing is, as annexation happens, usually roads start becoming part of your jurisdiction too, so that's something that ought to be considered. Where you already have Missouri Roberta, this is an extension of what, and follows urban growth boundary of what you, seems like the regular way that we usually do the annexation is once that part goes in, it's a road's good way also.
So, a couple of things, right now, just to try and clarify a little bit of this, where Rabbit Hill, Missouri ends and then turns into Rabbit Hill as it's going north, that is still in county jurisdiction, it's not being proposed in this agreement to, of this action item, to, to be annexed. And, and so that portion of this tax lot itself does not, does not look to ask to be, it's just that east and west portion. The rest, what Ray described as going kind of on the east side of Roberta, has already been annexed, is what, what Ray has said. So, this, this property really should be divided into kind of three portions, if I'm looking at it right, and I would say the part that abuts Rabbit Hill Road should be split off, then this portion that's furthest north, that is being asked to be consented to annex, should be a portion of a tax lot, and then everything that's on that, that east boundary of Roberta should also be a tax lot.
Well, this one's pretty unique, because you're annexing around part of the urban growth boundary. Ray did say that Orgis is looking at annexing in, but if I'm mistaken, all, all we're annexing is the red, right? But this part here will not be annexed in.
That's already.
It's already in there? So this is city's jurisdiction.
And so right above the red, too, is.
So, wouldn't it make sense then, for if that's already annexed in for this road, to be part of the city's jurisdiction?
Well, Missouri running east and west as you go across there already is.
Already is, to right here.
And west to there.
All the way to here.
Missouri's.
connects all the way to Rabbit Hill.
Yes.
I don't have a problem with, I'm just trying to figure out the.
We, at this point, we are suggesting that we'd be willing to include that sliver of property east to west between the Talings property and the Millennium property as part of the annexation. I think the road, and I guess I would, I would prefer to leave the road for future discussion, and that sliver alongside the road, I believe that should stay with the road.
Whoever has.
And that's definitely my.
The road boss is back, back there, and he's a road official, he probably has as much to say on the county side.
I talked to you about this already, Ray, didn't I, earlier, and you was thinking about taking Roberta to Geiser View one time.
Well, we had talked about that, that would, you and I had that discussion, but that was because there was some interest in annexing the property that gone out where the hot springs are, or the hot pond, rather, and the old property now belongs to Heaton, but that has not gone anywhere, so at this point in time, all we're going to be looking at is the Talings property.
So if that property does go later, are you going to address the road then?
That would be, seem to be like the point that it would make sense to look at all of Rabbit Hill Road possibly at that point, but that would be for some future discussion. But at this point, I really don't want to go, you know, a quarter of a mile and then stop, you know, at that, at that location, just, again, you're creating a jurisdiction, maybe an illogical boundary.
No, you need to go right to Geiser View and just make a right and hook right up to the state highway and take that one too.
You're not trying to get rid of roads? I don't, I don't think you'll find a taker over ours. As I said, you know, this is, we're adjacent to the Talings property already. We're proposing this just because we want to clear up the jurisdiction of this little sliver land that lay, that would otherwise lay in between them, and it just seems to be a good idea to clear it up at this time. This parcel of land, I ran, I ran into this years ago when I was at the county, and we had some discussions, Brad, you may remember, with Carol and Julian, and, and maybe the Davises and whatever, kind of south of Missouri, between there and the fairgrounds. And so this piece, as I recall, was deeded to the county in nineteen seventy-one through some kind of a process, and, and there were a number, a number of other parcels included in the same, in the same document, that were these odd shaped pieces of land that lost any ownership trail of. In fact, we're in the process of clearing title to a couple of those that were deeded to the town at that time, up where the Dollar General's been proposed to be located. There's two ten-foot wide pieces there that were part of that. A little further up on Sixth Street, there's another one. So it, my, my explanation was given to me back at that time by, I think it was the assessor, but it may have been, it may have been somebody else, was that these were parcels that kind of ended up being created because of surveys that did not come together accurately at some point in time, and they, and they left parcels of land that had no clear ownership. So that's all I'm trying to do at this point, is clear up the jurisdiction on this little piece while we annex the other one.
But the subject before us is not this full red line, it's only the east-west.
Only the east-west piece between Rabbit Hill Road and.
Yeah, that's, that's what you're consenting to in your agreement. I, I've just thrown in as my recommendation, which I gave orally in a previous meeting, that I want the whole thing donated, but really, we, we definitely need to keep that Rabbit Hill portion of the tax lot, yeah, because it's, it's really best news as a buffer for it. Which later at some point we may, you know, give over to the city too.
So for tomorrow, we're just acting on the east-west.
Just do that now.
I don't see a problem with that.
So I'll, I'll wait for a letter back from you guys, or an email or something, I guess that'll be your direction tomorrow after you make a decision, and if it's, if it's that you're willing to go forward, I'll have the document prepared.
And when, Darwin, we donate that to the town, then you can worry about the state forestry too, that had, remember, they also was worried about that four-foot strip down through, between the fairgrounds.
Down here.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yeah, it does, it goes all the way to the highway.
Yeah, back when we worked on that before.
Yes, you're right.
Portions of that, portions of that, whether it's the town or the county, it just needs to be vacated.
It's already in town.
It's already been used by those, those property owners, it just needs to be.
And it's under county ownership, four foot with already occupied. We ran into something back when, I can't remember.
I forgot about state forestry, but I do know that there were discussions about with Carol and Julian and somebody, I think it was Vicki Davis.
I'm pretty sure it was. Anyways. Is it east-west?
Yep. Thank you. I'm going to stack my.
That's all I think after you.
Thanks, Darwin. We have a ten o'clock, which is forty-five minutes out, so we go to other business. Mental health phone system recommendation.
Okay, so the phone system recommendation, the phone system at mental health is very old. Yes, and they're having a difficult time doing conference calls, that kind of stuff. So we did some research on potential options, and the best option that we came up with was for the option number one that you see from Basin Telecom. It's a standalone system, it will have its own server, it kind of works like the system that we have here at the courthouse. We did look into hooking them into our phone system, but that was quite expensive. So, this, this was felt to be the best option, I did run this through my aunt, Ted Geiser, and this was the best recommendation. This will be paid, if approved, through a mental health fund.
This followed all the contract review board rules and everything?
It did.
Nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Long time in the company, they needed it for quite some time.
Yeah, we're going to deal with that tomorrow. We have Rick here, though.
Hey.
Rick, on rock crushing bid and Culver quotes and rock exemption, any of you like to take on first?
Whatever, your pleasure.
Let's go from top to bottom, the Culver quotes.
Culver? Okay, we, a lot of these pipes that we run on the Dog Lake Road, interesting enough that these Culver quotes still is down big time, and the last time I bought Culvers in two thousand and four, and a lot of these prices are only up by fifty-one cents a foot over that many years, so we got a pretty good bargain on that. Of course, we wanted to recommend tomorrow to take the low quote, Contact, for forty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. And with the prices being that low, I talked to Jim Bailey, I'll probably add a bit more as long as I don't go over seventy-five thousand, pay a few more, and then probably on that. So that'd be what we'll vote on tomorrow on the Culvers.
How many, and what's it at?
How many pipes? Well, they're going to be on this particular order here, it's going to be two thousand feet of fifteen, eighteen-inch pipe, and then there's going to, it's broke down, but how did it get, it's by the foot, and they're twenty-foot, you know, pieces, and so, I mean, it's a large truckload. And the only difference between these three companies is that Contact's out of Redding, California, and Pacific Corrugates out of Eugene, and Heaton Steel, they buy from Pacific Corrugate, corrugated too, and, but they have shipping, and Redding doesn't have shipping, that's the only reason they're beating, so it's kind of funny watching, and some pipes, some of them are lower than others, but the bottom line contact was, you can see right at two thousand dollars lower than that of two.
And that is inclusive of shipping?
Yes, and shipping's included, and I want to make sure that, so that's basically how, one reason they got to beat, this is because one has, the shipping's included in big volumes, and this, this will be a big semi-truck load, it's going to be full.
Like Heaton Steel, that forty-seven thousand, six hundred includes shipping?
Yes.
And the Contact, forty-five thousand, six hundred includes shipping?
Yep. Yeah, and when they broke them down, not as far from the price difference, it's the ship, that one was cheaper, they wait for shipping.
So Contact wait the shipping?
Yeah, it's in, they have their own trucks, it is what the story is, and others have the red trucks, so. Okay. Crushing, is that was the next one?
Yes.
Okay, tomorrow, we'll want to bid this to Lois Mitter again, and this will be party destruction. Two hundred and thirty-one thousand, and then Knife River was second, two eighty-seven. Quite a little story on this, the first round on the bids, we had no bid, and I kind of had to get on my bicycle, get the two bottom ones that come out and bid, they didn't really, one never knew about it, and the other one didn't really want it. The two high bids were, they, they were on stakeholder's list at the bid, and they didn't bid, but they seen it was rebid, so they knew right away that we had no bid, so they, they said, well, we're the only ones who bid it, so five hundred and twenty-four thousand is quite a bit of money, so they came with their guns loaded. So to break that down, they were like seventy-five dollars a yard for quarter-ten chips, seventy-five dollars a yard, I never heard that in my life. Now, you're going to do a rock exemption tomorrow to Jim on Knife River, Jim, sorry, lawyer, Jim Bailey?
Bailey.
Yeah. Is going to exempt Knife River through a bidding process to make rock for us, chip rock for thirteen dollars and fifty cents a yard, so that is supposed to be what the exemption can save you. I mean, it's just, this is really an eye-opener, yeah, so even with a low bid of this rock, it's still twice as much as the engineering rejected cost. It went twice as much when we, but our oil prices were down to offset that, and otherwise we would have taken out of our budget. And in the two top bids, I mean, I would have to think that you'd have to throw them out, I mean, there's no way you could accept that, we'd have to group up supplement budget and come up three hundred thousand dollar reserves, I mean, there's no way, I don't think we could even accept those bids, but that's, that's a bidding system that's supposed to save you money, you have to get a hose on once in a while.
And a lot of the same specs and everything else, huh?
Yeah, well, they'll have to. Oh, I'm missing the biggest part of it, Denise hand you guys this paper?
Yep.
So, this being a federal highway contract, you know, it's, it's a learning process for all of us, and just sitting in the evenings in my chair on the TV and texting Jeremy Morse, who's the engineer of this project, acting as engineer, the procedure on award lists, first of all, I had, they have to go through the two-page documentation, to make sure the bonds and everything is, is completely correct for the contractor. And I said, so we're okay to award, and he goes, oh no, he says it's a three-step thing, and I was like, oh, good thing we're texting here in the evening, we're not bothering you, because tomorrow, what we would like to do, and I sent this to Jim Bailey this morning, is you'll have to approve the intent to award, turn around and approve the actual award, if no protest, that goes seven days after the bid opening, there's, I guess, seven days for anybody to protest, and then even after you tell the low bidder, they go to the table to talk about the contract agreement and the contract, so each step above is contingent on the previous step, but if I do this each meeting, we'll be into Jim again, I don't want to pull that, so they're recommending you guys would do it upon the contingent of each step, and hopefully Jim Bailey will shed some light on that tomorrow. I'll probably, probably should come to the meeting tomorrow, so I can help clarify that, and I didn't realize that this would have to go through those steps.
Oh, she took one of those typos that Denise would catch on.
Oh, she didn't do this. I guess the only one left is the exemption, and.
Exemption's what you're talking about, does it type up?
Yeah.
On the, which one, Ken?
On the exemption?
Review board. The last name is, the name is Phil, seventeen hundreds.
Well, I should, it's a good, if I was a good department head, I'd try it for a game up here.
I hate to be picky, but thank you, Pop-Tart.
Yeah, but I hear you're Ken's favorite roadmaster, so it's okay.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You caught it, you got my opening there, right?
You know, another thing that needs to be corrected on here is the rule, you see which rule this is, it needs to be, it's rule eight, I'm sure, and that needs to be at the top of page two, so I need to correct that, so we, we need to have another, another rule there, too. So we'll put that on there, let's correct it tomorrow, and I'll come to the, so rule eight states that, as you read it, it's one one at this time, most states aim, that's only one of this time, that it's been proven and tested that passed ODOT spec for federal highway rock, and, and also the huge savings of this, I mean, it's gigantic. There's even a low bid on this one, even local, and it's still twenty-one, twenty-one on the gold price. I've never heard of mine like that on rock, or it's just, it's hard, you know, I'm still use of thirteen, fourteen on three-quarter E and C, and maybe as high as seventeen or fourteen, but I guess this might be the new move, I don't know, but it, it goes the old saying, a burden that has better than a bunch of the mush, that you don't know what's going to do, and it's nice to have a few companies out there that have some idea of what the rate is, you know, because it's spooky to go and open bids and I build a half million on a project, someone who passed it at a hundred thousand, you know, it's, that's. And unfortunately, the first one I opened was five hundred and twenty-five thousand, it took, had the heartbeat when it got to the level three, it's like, holy cow.
So for tomorrow, on the exemption, you'll get the rule number?
And fix the correction there, and I'll get that up to Denise this afternoon.
That's quite a savings to the county right there, that exemption.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good example of exemption, if somebody ever wanted to say something, so, that's thousands of dollars. So anyway, I'll, I will be here tomorrow to help clarify any of these things, unless there's a chance, and wait a minute, you guys can help me out here, I might have jury duty tomorrow, so this probably, I need to be here probably more than I would in jury duty.
Yes.
What do I want? I got to call in tonight, so. I deferred it for two years, I think you can't defer this for four years, I've had this, yeah, so anyway.
We need to follow up, and if that, you, you release the jury duty tomorrow.
If you, yeah, unless you want to make a call first and make sure that they don't cancel it.
I would just give notice, can you do that, Denise? To the court?
Jada? Send them up.
I can try that it won't happen, but I can try to.
Yeah, we hold court, in court.
You guys can just take a break and move up there real quick, and we'll just have a pause and.
So there's possibly a jury trial tomorrow?
Yeah.
Do we have a time for tomorrow?
What time do I sit here?
I call tonight.
Call tonight, find out, and maybe you could step away for the amount of time we could get through this.
Yeah, what, um, let me see if I can find out mid-afternoon, then I'll give us time to work. But they told me if I made a run on this thing, this, that I would make my oil trial within this jury duty. So that they would obligate my obligations, that they would, um, yield to my obligations. I, I have my job, so...
They're usually pretty good.
I would think they would let me come to a meeting tomorrow.
If we put him, if I just told him the time at ten-ten? I don't have any, we don't have a timed item, so if I said...
They would be picking jury tomorrow, so he wouldn't be there for that. So we should hope they'll get a new excuse for tomorrow, we can request that.
See if he can do that.
Yeah, I wouldn't wait until one o'clock tonight, I wish, so maybe go talk to Dan or something good.
Oh, we will, yeah, we will.
And if he says no, then tell him that we've done the job in the court.
Okay, and then tomorrow I'll be here and let's see if we can get this over with. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Good work on that exemption.
Who is my favorite late candidate?
That's what I hear, that's because I'm the only one.
And, and his favorite late candidate by the name of Ken.
Well, at least I know you're on his list.
Yes. Give his favorite late candidate by the name of Brad.
You wait till I hire my replacement, we'll be two, then we'll see what he says.
Thanks, Rick. The other, we need Sheriff Taylor here, we need Larry Weir here, and we need Ann. But before we go there, we've covered the addition, which is USDA broadband grant application. That was due to USDA yesterday. It's been a real short turnaround, lots of work, even on the weekends, we can't pull it together. Our last consent, consensus was, we was looking at five counties. That was the recommendation by USDA rep. But the other county, out here, Hornet, Pembroke, hasn't really followed through. Modoc is really unrested. But our agreement was, we'd go with a contention on the other counties. What we have now is one county as opposed to three others. And this grant application, like I said, there's a quick turnaround, Doris, is to, is for up to trim six thousand dollars to a twenty percent match, which is about five thousand plus dollars matched. The prudence that we believe, uh, with five counties, but the three out that comes back. But we've been able to get, well, I'll explain why the grant is for. Typically, if you apply for USDA grant, like for implementing the physical structure or whatever, you usually start off with a fifteen percent grant. But the application is usually about this thick. And it has all these things that you have to put data in on your demographics, you know? Every little thing, you have to have the information. And that the grant usually opens for about two months. And if you don't have your data, it's forming to get application. So this grant we're talking about here is to gather front load and get the information. So it can be used by either us on the grant or an independent internet service provider, or we can, we can solicit state to help us. I mean, it's basic information, uh, and strategies. This strategy of getting broadband out to Warner Valley or Surprise Valley works in this way, another one that. It, it gives us all the background information that we or any other entities would need to pursue getting broadband out to underserved areas. And it was due yesterday, so I went ahead and signed that we had agreed to a thousand. We have some other benefactors who contributed to offset the three counties that bid. So we just need to know, and get an aid to ratify going with it, or if it's an aid, we can solicit others.
We talked about this in our last meeting, and you explained very well that you was trying to bring these other counties in. You say, they didn't, they decided not to, we're down to us and Modoc County, apparently. And you negotiated the twenty percent down in some way, or else you found other funding. So the commitment to Lake County would be a thousand dollars. And you identified where we can go for that thousand dollars again, and we've been able to work with it.
I talked to Ann, and she said, I forget what it's long, but there's, uh, we can ask her this. But she said that she has some...
You, you identified a place to leverage that.
Yes.
I don't think you need a motion consensus to ratify it, because we'd already talked about it, and it would be a thousand dollars, I'm agreeable to you.
There's essential information that, as you know, Warner Valley is deficit, Surprise Valley is in the same thing. A small high as P just cannot get over the hill, and don't have a population to pay back in.
And this, this basically is feasibility study to show the need that...
Saying something about the data.
And then, then you can start continuing, continue to work, because you've been working on this a long time. Try and find a way to get those services to those communities, because they'll be narrowed down by the feasibility study of what really is needed.
And by pulling it back to Modoc, it really benefits us, we got this smaller area to get other data on.
Sure, sure, well, and it's right here, close.
It's all citizens. And again, to, for the record, it's not providing services broadband. It's gathering the information, the strategies, and then we have to pursue mechanism or encourage mechanisms to get there.
Was consensus good, or did you want to...
Consensus fine. To, just like I said, I had to submit it yesterday by postmark.
Let's, let's take five minutes break, which is grant the people that we have, she'll, we have enough.
I'll go get Larry and Mr. Sheriff, if that helps. I can call. Oh, call, yeah.
Uh, Rick and Feen, uh, nine forty-four. Took me a while to figure it out. It's not a decision. Mike, we have a sheriff interrogation system, that's the subject. Now, Warner Valley thing you did to me last weekend is unacceptable.
The one that I did?
Warner.
Oh. That's good, though, that's how we get...
Must bring time back. Yeah, what do you have here for us?
What would you like to know about that?
Uh, recommendation to purchase install system, a new interrogation move on Sheriff Department, fifteen hundred dollars installed by half-time.
So the information that's before you, um, we did some research on different systems that were gonna be all inclusive for the interrogation room. And we're talking specifically the recording equipment for, for that room. Um, the only thing that is not included in this is the TVs. The TVs will be on top. And I think there's one TV.
There should be one TV and then a DVD player.
The DVD player is included in the system.
Okay.
And the cost of the system is seven thousand ninety dollars. Um, ATech's install amount is fifteen hundred.
For a total of eight thousand five hundred.
Correct. Not including the TV.
So you're basically just in your room upgraded tech, technology.
It's gonna be in the new room, in the new part of the courthouse that's being remodeled now.
It's, it, uh, is just off the conference room. And in the conference room, the interrogation room, there's gonna be a one-way mirror in there. That's just for observations of, of a suspect. But the system itself, we're mandated by, um, ORS, or by statute, to have audio and video, um, surveillances of Measure eleven murders. And what that means is any murder that's going to go to prison, or it's a death penalty case, we're mandated to have that audio, video, um, evidence. Because it's an automatic appeal to the Oregon Supreme Court or Oregon appellate court. So it's, like I say, all law enforcement's mandated to have it.
I guess it makes sense.
So is there an ongoing cost, first question? And where are you wanting to leverage the dollars to pay for this?
My understanding that was coming out of the, uh...
The technology side, I guess you need to get with Ann. We've had a little conversation on what we're doing, but that's why I asked her to stay, so we can make sure.
Is this, so earlier conversations sounded like it was kind of a couple different components that made up the total cost. Is this a true system?
This is a true system.
It's a standalone system?
So since it's over five thousand dollars, it's capital?
Correct.
Okay, originally, it sounded like it was, you know, recording, a TV, a monitor. So different items that would have possibly been materials and services instead of a system that had over five thousand.
So we just go one-on-three capital?
That's right now where I would suggest. If it were materials and services, the sheriff actually has some wiggle room in his operating budget to handle that. But if it is a true, um, unit that's over five thousand, that needs our capital definition.
So is that for just the system, or do I take the IT, ATech?
Anything, any cost associated with getting that up and running counts towards the overall purchase price. So the labor, if there was shipping, if, um, yeah, if anything associated with it.
Total install, everything associated with it, okay. So did I clarify where we could go for the dollars?
Yeah.
How many have on us there?
In one-on-three.
And then is there an ongoing cost for IT, for a dedicated line, or anything like that?
There shouldn't be, it's a standalone...
Standalone?
Yeah, it won't.
There's no program costs, no maintenance costs, nothing like that?
It should just fall under our standard ATech contract after install?
I, I know that we're talking about CEGIS requirements, but...
CEGIS, for the audience?
Is the Colonel of Justice, uh, um, what, help me out here? Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a clearance at confidentiality, where we have information going on these buffaloes. You have to have a clearance to get in there, so it's not compromised. I don't believe there is a CEGIS requirement for that. Because it is mandated by the, the state, it's part of an investigation. It's an evidence in the physical package, CEGIS has nothing to do with that. We record that, it goes on DVD, and that DVD goes into our case file. It, it, it isn't stored on any system that would require a CEGIS requirement. It's just stored on DVDs, it goes into the, like I say, the case file, and, and that's where it is. As any other evidence.
Oh, we hope we never have that murder or whatever happens here, but it could have. Can this be used...
Can this be used for anything else besides that?
It can be used for any interrogation or interview. It could be civil depositions or anything that you want.
Multiple use, once we have it in place. And it'll be secured in your own department's buffalo?
That's not, it will not. It's my understanding that nothing that is recorded will be secured in CEGIS at all. There is, you know, IT is installing it all. And we went through this conversation with CEGIS requirements versus non-CEGIS requirements. And my question was, is what is the criteria to have these CEGIS requirements? It's evidence in a case investigation. It has nothing to do with CEGIS. And I think that's where we left it, is there was not a CEGIS requirement. Do you remember that?
I'm not sure.
Basically, it is required, and we have to run that.
We can't ask Mr. Brown that question after a call? If we need to call it.
It's not essential. Then, to me, it's mandated. I'd love to get up to speed on it. Well, as we're remodeling and having the room set up appropriately, this is the right thing to do. I'm just happy that it can be multiple use, that we can use it on other things. Because it's quite a cost just waiting if we never had any of those other crimes happen. So, it'd be used for many other things.
Right. And as you're well aware, it's between the sheriff's office and probation. And probation can use it for interviews or whatever they need to do also.
Sure. And with the construction going on now and remodeling and all, will we have time to get it? So, it can be integrated into the report?
All the wiring's done and everything. We worked that all in with the electrician through the process, so.
Okay. Good.
It's just a matter of plugging things in.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Sheriff.
Annual assessment and taxation grant.
Yes.
The copy that is before you is last year's. Larry and I spent some time this morning re-gracking for this year. We'll have a first fifty-two.
The only thing to change on that one was the amount of our cost, which is a little bit more this year than it was last year. It'll be seven sixty-two, six twenty-nine instead of seven forty-five. Probably going to, mostly salaries increase.
This is a grant that happened yesterday sometime?
Yeah, and it was submitted and accepted by the Department of Labor. They had a brand-new system this year and a brand-new staff. A person that we've worked with retired. And so, they, they've had some problems with their system, with other counties, too. weren't able to approve it and move it along the line until they fixed it yesterday. So, today's okay for our resolution for them this year. Next year, we have another plan to deal with this. It has to do with when we do our budget hearings and when I can get in front of you to get the resolution signed in time for them. But we, we'll have it covered in future years.
So, just for clarification, the application amount is seven hundred and sixty-two thousand. I can't remember the rest of it.
Six hundred and ninety-nine.
And that's not the amount we received. That's what...
That's what you're right. The amount we receive will be based on what our costs are.
Yes.
Last year, it was a hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Yeah, I just noticed there was a question about a week ago about, hey, you're giving a grant for seven hundred and sixty-some thousand. That's just, that's not what the amount we received. The amount we received is a hundred and something.
Per year, yeah. Yeah, and I thought, I think the question came up, six hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And that's over four years.
Yes.
Just for the audience on video, tell us what CAPA stands for.
County Assisted Financial Fund Association, I believe. There's a lot of acronyms in our world. But basically, what they're doing is reimbursing us for some of our costs because they look at our reports and the results of our work. That's how they monitor us. They have supervisory authority. If we don't follow the laws and the rules and the practices that they want us to do, legally, ethically, all that stuff, then you wouldn't qualify for this grant. Like, we didn't have enough employees. They said we needed X amount of FTEs in order to accomplish this job correctly. If we didn't need that, then we wouldn't get the money for the grant. So, if we're complying with their policies.
An assisted thing assigned yesterday?
Was that, yeah.
So, we actually need to modify it. It was due yesterday.
You'll have the resolution tomorrow.
Okay. Good. Thanks, Larry.
Sure.
Thank you, Larry. Oh, man. Budget resolution two thousand fifteen dash eleven through fifteen.
Before you should have five resolutions. And most of these are due to salary and kind of staff changes. So, we'll go through one by one. This time of year, I really watch all these categories because they're getting pretty close to the end of fiscal year.
Basically, in this year's budget, we project the best we can. At the start, at the end, things just need to be tweaked a little bit to balance.
Yeah, we really budget the salaries as close as possible, very accurately. And every now and then, something comes up that necessitates a change. So, the first resolution, two thousand fifteen dash eleven, is in the matter of an appropriation transfer for the accessories department. There were some staff changes in the accessories department this last year, and so, they needed some temporary part-time staff to work longer than anticipated. And the amount is two thousand dollars. There is some savings in materials and services, so they can decrease materials and services and increase their salaries. So, the net effect of the zero, or net effect of the budget is zero.
Just moving from one show plus to the next. Well, what we've done, was it three, four years ago, we adopt by category salaries and then materials and services. And that way, we, doing these resolutions makes us very much aware of where people are at within their budget. And whenever we've done that, we knew that we'd start seeing some resolutions. And it sort of, it's a very good thing, in my opinion, because it doesn't allow a department heads and other people to just bottom-line budget. They have to watch their salaries, watch their materials and services. I think it's a good, good way we move to in this.
Yes. So, that's the first one. The second one, two thousand fifteen dash twelve, is, I believe, essential services. This is our janitorial, part-time janitorial staff. You know, this one comes up year in and year out. So, next year, we're going to make a little change here. I believe this person is paid hourly, so on a week year, we have a few more hours. Even just the way the pay periods fall, we can see work days change. So, we just need to add a couple of days here in the future because it seems to come up year in, year out. Really small amount, but we have to do it. That appropriation limit is actually a limit. It doesn't allow for a ten percent variance. Some people talk about that. We don't allow that. This is your limit. This is the most you can spend in a category. So, this is seven hundred and fifty dollars to increase salaries. And again, there will be some savings in materials and services. So, we can decrease materials and services and increase salaries here.
And no effect here will be on that?
Correct. Two thousand fifteen dash thirteen is in the district's attorney's office. Again, some staff changes there. So, we increased salaries by three thousand two hundred, and again, savings in materials and services. So, net effect is zero.
This is two thousand, the number fourteen is on pressure.
On pressure. So, my assistant in my office, for the past several years, has been helping out other funds and departments. This fiscal year, she's been solely in my department, and so, there was an error in the insurance amount associated with just my department. So, we were underbudgeted for that insurance amount. I was hoping to save money on materials and services, but there are some training things I'm looking at that I might need some of those materials and service dollars. So, I hate to do it, but this one looks at contingency to increase the salaries.
Your budget's still leaving, that's fine.
There was another option of unanticipated revenue with the motel tax, but it wasn't going to be enough, and it would have been shut away.
So, this one will affect the general budget?
Yeah, general fund contingency will decrease. Your overall general fund budget stays the same. You're just decreasing contingency and increasing that salary.
And that's what I can take to CEGIS for unexpected expense and opportunities.
Yes. That was corrected for next fiscal year, by the way. Comment. Two thousand fifteen dash fifteen is another resolution in the matter of appropriations transfer. This is for the Veteran Services Fund. Outstanding work to place commemorative signs on Highway three ninety-five for that World War One honor. What that did was increase our materials and services spending to place those signs and purchase them. And this one has savings in salaries. So, we're doing the opposite. We're decreasing salaries and we're increasing materials and services. It is important to note that we did receive a lot of donations for the sign placement. However, we have to show revenues in revenues and expenses in expenses. So, the materials and services expenditures increase. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, at ten o'clock, a few minutes past, we have ASDAQ, ATD Contract Services. And need an update, two thousand sixteen, seventeen support agreement. We were ready to go. I thought y'all might want a break before we started. If you walk out, you know you're too boring. Boring is probably where we are.
I'm not sure how much of an update we genuinely need. We did an update just recently. I guess we could go over a few of the projects we left to do for this year.
Did you get this for next year? So, they have copies of this? Okay. I can do that. So, there were a lot of projects that we completed in two thousand fifteen and sixteen. We went mental, mental health. They got a new server and connections. Same with public health, Sheriff's Department. Of course, we had a remodel, as you guys noticed. We were talking about this wonderful conference room, some of the other things that happened. Also, we made some changes up at the annex, dealing with pickup in the health department. Fairgrounds, we set up, assisted them with wireless campus. We did set up connection with public health. We set up a dispatch connection with Sheriff. Mobile connections for the deputies and their vehicles, their cards and their laptops. We did do some training and implemented a data security system and kind of monitoring on the network. And those are all things that we did in the last year, kind of highlights, without getting into the day-to-day stuff. Currently in process to finish before the end of June, we're going to convert your current email to a government version of Microsoft. Now, what that does is we're currently sitting here, and this is all in what they call the cloud, but it's just Microsoft hosting. So, we're sitting here in the business section because they didn't have a government section when we moved. Now, they do. So, we're going to move you into the government section. The reason we're going to do that is federal requirements for HIPAA, CEGIS, ACA, and other requirements require that we secure the data, that we are able to access that data forever and ever, pretty much. And so, they have a version, a government version of an email system that is specifically made to do that. So, if you had an employee that was terminated when the lottery, whatever, that left the county, their email actually license goes to another person, but their email information stays there. So, we can reference it, look back on it forever and ever, instead of normally it would be deleted after ninety days for a year. So, the other side is a protection. The government version of this email system is in a protected side of the cloud specifically for state, local, and federal government by Microsoft. And all the servers are here in the United States and protected. So, that's a project we hope to have done by the end of, actually, this month. So, there'll be a little pain in that loop, but it'll be well worth it. As far as licensing, it saves you about a little over a thousand a year because the government version actually is less expensive than what you currently have. When we do the loop, we're going to do email encryption. So, those who have secure data that needs to be emailed, they can encrypt it. And it's a very simple process, and we'll train on how that works. And at that time, we'll introduce the county disclaimer. Josh looks at me and says, "There's no training that can make you." And I text him on the weekend and said, "My system is quirky." We are a challenge in many different ways. Well, I can tell you that with the email encryption, you can do some pretty scary stuff, like encrypt an email and forget how to get back in, all kinds of fun stuff. But it's really simple. So, we'll show you how to do it. For you to encrypt an email, it will be as simple as in the subject line. The first word might be "secured." And then, your email is secure. And we'll just show you how it works, and it goes through. And we are compliant with federal government as far as CEGIS and HIPAA is concerned. So, for the audience, HIPAA and CEGIS is confidential information that needs to be... Correct. Correct. And the state of Oregon is signing an agreement with Microsoft on this, on their government side, which hopefully will be done shortly. And encryption of emails, this is very critical for our public health department and our mental health department because they have to exchange otherwise confidential information between departments. Right. And some of the other ones are like the sheriff, the DA.
Veteran services.
Veteran services. Those are all people who use the secure data. So, they're very important for them. And then, we're going to do a little backup project at the fairgrounds to back up their data remotely. So, then, we move on to... Can we say back up their data remotely? Where's the remote backup over to here? Or water buffalo or something? Yeah, we're actually going to back it up to a federal compliant cloud backup system because they don't have that much data. And it's very inexpensive to do that. So, instead of us having to build a strong connection there to do the backup, we can just back them up to the cloud. That way, if that building burned down or whatever happened, they still have their data backup, and we could get it and rebuild everything that they have. It is very good that, though. Very good. The cloud is where most things are going to. Yeah. Where am I bringing this? Clearing my legs. Are you related to the old tall man that had his head in the clouds? That's about where I'm at. You really don't look that tall. No. I'm getting old. I'm going down and out. Anyway. A lot of deer said hi this morning, just so you know. I was awake then. Projects for this coming year. Roads Department, we're going to set up some new switches at the roads department. They're getting new phones out there. We'll set up another server, which they already have. We just need to set it up. And then, we're going to establish a connection to the county. And the next one is an interrogation room for the sheriff. And we'll assist on that, bringing in an interrogation system, which is pretty cool. And it is made specifically for that, the system is. We did a lot of research on that, and I think we came up with a good... We did a lot of research on that, and I think we came up with a good system. And we have talked to the sheriff on references and stuff, but.
It's on agenda to set that tomorrow. Is there any ongoing cost or anything that we're not aware of from Mac Tech or anything? And that one should set up, it's set up.
Yeah, once it's set up, yeah, it's pretty rock solid.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's real simple, too, so the deputy shouldn't really have a problem with it. Some of the compliance things there is they're going to burn to a DVD, which is what the feds want you to do, by the way. So if you would have, if we, there are some systems where you could use a DDR technology, but then you have to take it out of the DVR and burn it to a DVD for storage. So anyway, I think the system will work out really well. The FBI uses it a lot.
Pierce County, Washington.
Yeah.
There's about seven or eight that have already been using the system for several years.
And for anybody in the audience that's one day older than I am, when you say you want to compare who they are, you actually transform them from here.
Yeah.
No liars are involved.
No liars are involved. Another thing that we are looking at is once we get your email done and your email encryption working, then we're going to do a data encryption program. Where actually on the server, on laptops and various mobile devices, we will actually encrypt the data. And this is another line of security for those who have to deal with secure data, whether it's the health department, public or mental, DA, sheriff, whoever it is who would handle any kind of medical information or CGI or Co. CGS information, then we will go ahead and encrypt those folders on the server on those laptops.
Obviously, the HR person has to do the confidential person.
Yeah, exactly. So everybody who deals with that kind of information, we will encrypt it. And some of the things that, the more common things that we see happen is not that somebody comes in and through the firewalls and gets to your server, but somebody within the county would do something like that, disgruntled employee or something of that nature. The other side of it is, is like if you went to a conference somewhere and you put your laptop or even a little jump drive and you forgot it or left it somewhere, somebody could get data off of there. So we're going to encrypt it so that doesn't happen. It's just tying up one more loop on the security. So that'd be a project for this year. And the fairgrounds, we're going to install them in firewall and manage switch out there for support. Sheriff has a couple of projects. One is the sheriff's network has to be separate from the county network, and it currently is. But what we need to do is we need to, they also need to have their own separate backup system, totally separate. So they have a backup here in the county that's separate from the county backup and a backup up at the annex, which is separate from the county backup. So that's something we're going to do this year.
And it's different than used to the cloud for backup.
Correct, it is, yeah. And in this case, our disaster recovery backup will be the annex. Yeah. So I don't know if we want to put some barrier between the building and the trucks or what.
They're on order.
That was a big hole. Yeah, for just somebody forgetting to put the clutch in. So the next one is the sheriff body camera system, where they're actually going to have the body cams where there's actual program and storage to go to run with that. And that's something that we'd be setting up. And the next was the network monitoring system. This is different than what we have now that tracks everything that happens on the network. This is a geek system, meaning it's for us to track if there's any server or switch issues or anything on the network or somebody unplugged the cable, whatever. This will what we call sniff it out for us. There's blue sniff, all kinds of stuff. But anyway, it'll track it down for us, we'll know what's going on and where it's going on. So we will, and Josh will have a, just a home screen that shows, yeah, all the servers are running fine, all the network connections are fine. If anything happens, it pops up and flies at four, since there's an issue.
Makes it more efficient.
Way more efficient, yes.
So our contract price goes down?
Yeah.
You knew where I was going down.
Maybe we could be a little more proactive. Yes, it does.
The performance I had with the new system.
Oh, yes.
And then on the weekend, it was just one of the connections wasn't fully.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Just something simple that.
Yeah.
And this is where that program will help us drill down and figure out what the actual issue is. A lot of times, we have so many servers and things here at the county, we've gone quite a bit. And so to track all those servers and be able to be proactive on our side as far as updates and changes and stuff, this will help us immensely, which will help you have a better system. We also looked at a remodel for the server room to get it from under the bathroom and the plumbing. So if there was a water leak or whatever, it's not going to go on the servers again wired it. So the idea would be to move it from under there and then put some kind of a trough system in the ceiling. So if it did, hey, right now we have garbage bags on the top. That's not a good solution, so this is something we need to do, yes.
We need to do that sooner than later.
Yeah.
Heather's in our room right now, so.
What's that?
Heather's temporarily in our location right now, so once that gets shifted around.
So if we make the physical move, would we move all the equipment, too?
You're going to move all of the servers and all the wiring will be moved over to where Heather is now in that office next to the server room. And it's, from our standpoint, it's going to be a real pain in the pants.
Yeah.
And it's going to be a very long weekend because we have to take all of those wires and all those connections and flip them around into that room. And so it'll be very long for us. And then however Dave wants to do it, we need to put a trough in there so we don't get water down there. That would be the key.
Yeah, he's working on the apron type system or whatever or other right now, but yes.
Yeah, the same scenario for the server. Yeah, it's just something we've been wanting to do for years, and we just need to get it done. So the KVM, that's a geek, another geek thing for us, which allows us one central console to manage all the servers if you have a power outage, if there were some major issues. Our ability to remote into the server is one thing, but when you're in a situation like that, you actually have to have fans on. So instead of dealing with five or six different displays, keyboards and mice, you have one that manages them all, so that's a real key thing for us. And hopefully this year, we have some sequel upgrades from companies like Helion, Manatron, and Vatom. Hopefully, they catch up to current technologies so we can upgrade them. And then they'll be compliant. Some of these are on the edge of not being supported by Microsoft anymore, so this is something we need to complete by next year. Future projects, I just threw this in there. I know we've talked about a generator backup system. I would ask that we would be included in that. And I'm going to give you a couple of examples, say about large county client in Washington, and they put in a generator, we had nothing to do with it. And I'm talking Washington, and they put it in a hole. They buried it, it wasn't buried because it was down in a hole, a ten-foot hole, and they thought, well, it'll be safe there and they had everything. We're talking Washington where they might get a few inches of rain in here. It flooded, the first thing that went out was the generator because it was in a hole. You would think you would put it up above the water rain. The next one just recently happened where we had a client and their power went out. We were not involved again, and they asked the people who installed the generator to run power to the server room. They did, so when the power went out, the lights in the server room stayed on, but the power to the actual servers was gone. The whole objective of the generator was a bust. It was like, really, guys, you gotta be kidding me. But at least we could see them.
Wait, we haven't budgeted for emergency backup power here. This year it's not going to happen, but Dave's carrying that over.
Cool.
With Dave, he's the one that is working with our local electricians and everything.
Yeah, because I don't want anything like that to happen because now they have to go back and rewire that whole generator. And it's like, you gotta be kidding me. And there are certain specifications that you need for a generator to make sure that it's clean energy and that it's monitored. Because one of the other issues I've run into is that generator kicks on and you get this big jolt of juice that comes in and hits the UPSs and fries them. So there's a lot of things we need to look at when you do a generator.
It would be sooner than later.
Yeah, we will make sure and do that. The other thing that we're doing with some of our other clients are panic buttons. And what a panic button is, is if in the health departments or any of the departments that take money or wherever, if somebody comes in and there's an issue, whether it's threats, a gun, a knife, or whatever, the person sitting there, of course, under their desk can hit a panic button. The panic button automatically alerts the sheriff's department. He'll have a board that will show him which department it is that pressed that panic button. And so it's not really expensive, it runs on a network, and it's something that we can do. And we found it very useful in some of our county clients where they've actually had to use it. So instead of having to pick up a phone call, dial nine-one-one, go through dispatch and all of that, they just press that button and boom, it goes right to the sheriff's department. Just another level of security that we can look at in the future.
Are we networked where you could not only go to sheriff's department, but go to dispatch?
We could go there, we could.
Our other, our old panic button for what power they work, that's what they've done. Not always is the sheriff's department fully manned.
Right.
So if it gets to dispatch, then that, if we do this, we need to go to dispatch also.
Okay, yeah. And that's something like, say, this is a project that we're looking at in the future, and I want you guys to keep that in mind, that way if there are issues, they just hit that button and.
I would like to know, when you get a chance, some cost, one very cost roundabout because I just sooner than later have that done. We've had quite a few requests from some of our employees in several departments, and we do have a lot of interaction at different levels, so I'd like to see that sooner than later.
Had some situations for that which have been.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
Nice to have had.
Yep.
Yeah, so anyway, I just thought that would be something that we could look at in the future. The generator and the panic buttons are both pretty good things to have, and children. Yeah. Not just worry about the rain there, but there are other issues, so. And as long as we can see the servers go down, we feel better.
And were those two examples you gave on for the county facility?
Those were counties, yes, those are actual counties.
There was the other state.
Yeah, and the one with the lights in the server room happened two weeks ago. And I told them I never trust the generator, and they found out like. And in the contract, I think you have the final. Are you about the same?
It's all the same.
Yeah, it's all the same.
The only question I have, and it's not a big issue, is on the travel expenses for onsite work. It's got to set them out per mile for travel. We go by the federal rate, which goes up and down like P M.
Yeah, I don't even know what it is.
Point five seven five per mile.
Yeah.
But we generally reflect on the federal rate.
He's been very good about not charging us.
Yeah, we cut down a lot more than what we put in the contract.
It's been a quarterly cost.
Yeah, we're like. Yeah, you've been staking it to the man.
No, you're supposed to be wanting to hug him for saving us from our issues.
I just need to change the chairman.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
That fixed for tomorrow. I told her, didn't even look at that part. I was more focused on numbers, so. I was trying to find those, you know, fine lines.
You always, you know I usually review and find something.
I know.
Appropriate time, I guess. Just like to compliment Josh, he is a contact employee through you guys. Always has a smile on his face, he's always there. Commissioner Kestner uses him on weekends, apparently, and everything, but it's very nice when you take my skills and abilities and somebody comes in and doesn't, they don't talk to me or whatever and just sort of says, you know, Brad, here, there, whatever. And there's so many different skill levels throughout the whole county, so just like to compliment Josh.
And I'll second that. He does a good job.
He does.
We enjoy everything with him. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
His child is probably more so than the other three.
I'm not challenged, but my equipment. True, we do, we do work through it, though.
Thanks. We have pretty much all items covered. Department updates? I got to head to climate, so the sooner you get it served, the better. Do you have any latest updates? Well, I guess, real quick, I'm heading to climate, working on the Connect Oregon with Commissioner Blay and Butch this afternoon. Working on strategy for the Super Act, which is next Friday, Ben, on our project since application on Connect Oregon six. Mental health, we continue to work forward on the reorganization over there with our interim director, Kimberly, and our site manager, Chris. RFP is still a draft form, Billby has a copy of it right now, their attorney's looking at it. We'll bring that draft RFP back to be looked at by the Board of Commissioners, Denise and Jay, and the employees at the mental health because they have quite invested interest in this. So there's ups and downs going on as the Board of Commissioners have decided to go out for a RFP, for a private nonprofit. But the employees are stepping up and covering several different things, and I've had some, I have one meeting over there, I've made the team of Denise, Jay, myself, Vicki, Chris, Kimberly, and employees to work through this. We'll have a mental health advisory meeting tomorrow at noon. So we're moving forward, but it's not without a lot of bumps in the road. So continuing to work on that. I'm just going to go to Commissioner, all three of us are liaison, any ideas or any suggestions by boards? Always appreciate it.
I just want to add one thing, it's been a real pleasure working with that staff. They've been very helpful and very, very engaged and everything. I just want to say, I just really appreciate everything they're doing with it.
Some of them have been through many, many events.
They have.
And they have positive value to get through this one. They're very committed to the clients, Lake County clients throughout our town and everything. As long as we keep that, our number one priority is keep the services on the ground. We have the employees that's dedicated to it. Now, you said, we talked about going on a contract, and I heard you say private nonprofit. Should we get a public nonprofit? Yes, and I probably lump that altogether. The RFP will go out and whoever applies, applies. For contract services. For contract services, absolutely, yes. And all that's good. I just got a couple, last Thursday, I was at the G O N announcement meeting in Redmond on public presentation of implementation of their new RFP. There's a few little things there, but one thing I came away with is interim director named Jamie. I was very impressed by that. I hope she gets the directorship. She's come to be a real good woman, I hope that she is. Then Friday, I went to Heinz for Karen Butt Farland presentation. She's a well-known attorney depending on livestock, mining, public lands on our side of defense. And I'd say, it was mostly a refresher for me, she went over waters of the United States and the CCAAs and just more of a.
It was mostly a refresher for me, she went over waters of the United States and the CCAA's and there's more of a... And I have to say, a handoff to the Arnie County SWCD. That's it gets enough standing work to get the CCAA program going, which we capitalized on too. And one of the things I found out, they have a security so that for individual ranchers who join, their information does not go to the US facial lock, goes to, because if it goes to the facial lock, it becomes other information. It's all kept at the CW, SWCD. So they kind of did a good job there to maintain the confidentiality of the ranchers.
Just, you asked me if there's anything else, just to sort of tag on to that. This Friday, I will be in Heinz slash Heinz cooperating agency on the withdrawal of the mine dener. So I'll be there this Friday. It all overlaps on all we do, so yeah.
Only two other things, Wednesday afternoon, I head to Seven for a morning SB 32 meeting.
This afternoon?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, so you'll be here for the meeting?
The previous to SB 32 was mostly just presentation. This one, we should get down to the nuts and bolts, hopefully. It's a long way to go just for a few hours meeting.
But it's important, this SB 32 is important.
And then, not this week, but next week, I have that DEQ, that state work group on smoke. I missed the last two because of other business, but they're kind of wrapping it up at this time, so I'll be able to make that last blacklist session. That's all I have.
Very good.
10:32, any other things to give up to the other, any other gentleman?
Perfect, thank you, sir.